Good evening and welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First, roll call please, starting with Mr. Hackett.
Present.
Now, present.
Present.
Happy yellow, present.
Tessie, you're present.
Alan, present.
Driscoll, present.
With us, we have Town Planner Vanessa Price and zoning administrator John. Public hearing for proposed 2024 zoning amendment. Going to our say sixteen five three seven. Copy's a roll. Start with. Also, we have some correspondence. We have a choice of reading it, just making part of the public record.
Hackett, just make it part of the public.
So, let's start with zoning amendment one.
Question.
Sure.
We had a meeting already on a number of these amendments. Ones that changed, obviously, with us again. Ones that didn't change, do we have to?
The ones that you see before tonight are amendments one, nine, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Those are the ones that we will be covering tonight, and that was in your packet. Number one and number nine are the, some language changes that we had, so we had to repost it for public hearing. And then, the town attorney had, with all the new ones, went to eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Yep.
Do, do we need to, sorry, also, on that case, because we canceled last Tuesday, it was the last Tuesday's meeting?
Due to weather, yeah.
Right, but do we need to have one more ordinance before hearing, before the?
There is no more opportunity for any more public hearing tonight, is it? Yeah, so it's kind of.
Make sure we had the adequate number.
Yeah, so the sixteenth was just to, was not for the zoning amendments, so we're fine for that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
But, yeah, we had a one meeting this month already.
Yep.
So we're good with that, and then, this is our second public meeting for these last remaining warrant articles. So tonight, like I said once before, either vote yes or no, and then it'll go on the warrant. The warrant is supposed to post on Monday, is what I was told.
Okay, zoning amendment number one, Barrington zoning ordinance is recommended by the planning board as follows. Amend definitions and table of uses to allow elderly assisted home care facilities to house an unlimited number of residents in the village, town center, regional commercial, and highway commercial overlay districts, rather than restricting those facilities to fifteen residents on the maximum density permitted by New Hampshire D E S. Elderly assisted care facilities will still be limited to fifteen residents and have maximum density limitation in general residential and neighborhood residential districts, and will require a conditional use permit in all districts, including the regional commercial district. Going to open this to public comment. If anybody wants public comment, please raise your hand. Nobody is online?
Nobody is online.
Closing public comment. Board to deliberate on any changes or discussion. If there are no changes, the board will vote on the warrant article. Is there a motion to accept zoning amendment number one? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Roll call.
Napa.
Happy yellow, I.
Tessie, your eye.
Alan, I.
Driscoll, I.
Second article amendment number nine to the Barrington zoning ordinance is recommended by the planning board as follows. Remove definition of frontage from Article eighteen definitions and amend the definition of lot frontage in Article eighteen to be consistent with the definition in Article four point one dimensional regulations. Open this to public hearing, comment, any public comment? Being now I'm closing public comment. Board to deliberate. Yeah, I don't make, accept amendment number nine.
Okay, I'm sorry, who motioned it and who said?
John motioned.
I seconded.
Quick question about, about the motion, because we're not accepting the article, we're accepting the changes or the.
Both.
Both, yeah. This, this, our vote means it will go on the warrant.
Yes.
So. Roll call, please.
Yeah, Hackett, I.
Napa.
Happy yellow, I.
Tessie, your eye.
Alan, I.
Driscoll, I.
Okay. Next item. Are you in favor of amendment number eighteen to the Barrington zoning ordinance is recommended by the planning board as follows. Increase the required frontage for lots in the neighborhood residential and general residential districts from two hundred to three hundred feet. Increase the minimum lot size for lots in those districts from eighty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, which must include sixty thousand square feet of free, poorly or very poorly drained soils, and increase the additional square footage required for each additional one bedroom dwelling unit under a common roof that is not an A D U from forty thousand to sixty thousand square feet. I'm going to open this to public comment. Would anybody like to speak? Please come forward.
Barbara Irvine, ten twenty-two Franklin Pierce Highway. I do not support amendment number eighteen. My reason is, as a board, a few months ago, this board did not support bringing this forward. I feel that you're controlling homeowners' rights, and this was going to be a petition article, but it missed the deadline. And I think the right thing to do is not vote for it, because a few months ago, you didn't support it. That's all I have.
Any more public comment?
There is.
Somebody online? Okay.
If you're online, you will make a public comment for or against this zoning article, please raise your hand. We will give you a moment, and then I can unmute you for a public comment.
I, may I make public comment on it? I can get up and be public. I am a resident of the community.
You can, if you excuse yourself, and then.
You can actually comment as a planning board member. This is all a, this is a judicial role, it's a legislative role, so you guys can talk back and forth and.
Okay, so I will close public comment and allow a member to speak.
So my commentary on it is, I, I acknowledge that I did not get all of the petitioned articles in in the proper time. I was a day late, and I recognize that here publicly. I also would like to make a correction to a statement that was made, is that it wasn't brought up to the board. Mr. Driscoll asked me if I wanted to bring something forward to the board, and I said, no, I would be doing it as a petitioned article. And then I got to fall on the sword and ask for everyone to assist with that. I would also like to comment that in the last three weeks, I have had numerous people who have either reached out to me, stopped me publicly, locally, and it took me over an hour to get out of the, the voting area based on various conversations and comments that I had with people about the idea that they're happy to see folks looking to address some of the challenges, as well as ensure that we don't end up overdeveloping our community and turning it into a subdivision of Rochester or Dover. So I felt important to, to share that information with you folks and let you know this is the feedback that I've had. Also, reading the, the convert, the comments that came in, some of them, obviously, I agree with, some of them I did not agree with. I always find it interesting when there's, I guess, a challenge or pushback from developers, especially when there are comments around, around how it, we're, we're not helping the, the, the working class folk in the community. And when I see that I have yet to see a single development come in that did anything that helped the working class community, because they don't do anything that creates a price, a price point that is affordable to your teachers, your fire department, your police department people, folks in those roles. Thank you.
I too was, spent a lot of time at the polls, and I had a number of people also talk about the subdivisions and the impact of that. But from, they thought this was not a good idea. They felt like the individual homeowner, that it would be hard to come to Barrington as individual homeowner, and that people already had land and were hoping to at least maybe have the assurance of doing something that in the future felt like their land would be devalued. I heard lots of opposition to it.
I too have heard comments about doing something to restrict the growth that we're having. But I really believe the changes we're making with the uplands are going to affect the growth huge. And I think this is tying the hands of a lot of landowners and homeowners for doing a small subdivision for maybe their child or, or friend. And I don't think the public is going to understand what this means. And I think the changes that we already have proposed are going to slow growth and make it so, for that reason, I'm going to be against this one.
I think I'm leaning against it as well. I think for a lot of people in town, you know, the land is their 401K. And, you know, if you have a ten acre lot, this brings it from five lots to three lots. That can be a big impact on a small, you know, a smaller landowner, so. I mean, I've heard people in favor of it, but I've also heard people against it. I mean, a vote is basically the vote to put in front of the people, which is not a bad thing necessarily. That said, I think that, I agree with Bob, that I think that some of the change, most of the negative feedback we get, I think, is on the bigger, generally the conservation subdivisions, with lots of very, very small, there's a lot of density. There may be open land on the back, but people don't see that. They see the, you know, the, the property in the front with all the, all the housing, it's very, very close. And I think, to me, that's the feedback that, that I hear the most of. And I think, you know, I would try, try to address that first, and if you know, I put in one to try to get a little more, you know, clarity on the, the yield plans, which I think are sometimes really ambitious, if not reasonable. So I, I would like to take a step to try to slow that down before we take this step, so. But, you know, a yes vote would be to put it forward, people, and that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah, I was kind of conflicted too. I saw the advantages of maybe reducing the number in the conservation subdivision by doing. Then, on the other hand, I've talked to a couple of people. Have land, they may want to subdivide for their kids. So, okay, I'm going to do the roll call on this one.
Can I first have, yeah, be, I'm sorry, just need a motion before you go at that. I didn't mean to cut Buddy off.
One question in regard to the public comment. Was the reason against because of the, the process that we did wasn't followed, or against the article itself?
Are you asking Barbara?
Ms. Irvine, you're the only one that made a comment, so.
Yeah, I did, because a few months ago, this board did not want to bring this forward.
It was never presented.
Well, no, my, my question is, is it because of the, like, the procedure, or because of the, the?
Content.
The, the content of itself, yeah.
I would say.
It's not helpful when you tell us about that, because I'm trying to.
I mean, you're hurting the small homeowner, not the big developer. The big developer's still coming with your, these changes or not. They may not get as many lots, but they're still coming. That little person that wants their kid out back can't have it. But there isn't anyone here on this board that it's going to affect, because you don't have enough land to do anything. But you're not thinking of the little people. You're only thinking of the big developers. You don't want to come to town. That's my opinion. That's how I'm taking it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify that, because I didn't know which, which way you leaned to or what, but thank you, I appreciate it.
I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
Any more comment by the board before we vote?
Just a general comment around, there's been, there's a fair amount of misconception that people think it will devalue land. It actually will do exactly the opposite. It drives the value of the land up, and it controls the development, which further reduces or controls the, the tax burden on the people, because it doesn't create the added growth that you see with your fire department, your police department, your schools, and that you would see in your highway and transfer stations, because you're not creating future added roads. You're not creating all of that additional burden, and it controls that burden while also making the land more valuable as time goes on. And if you look, there's some really great, for the guys from Massachusetts, there are some really great examples there. When you get into towns like Melrose and Wakefield, and then you get on the southern tier where you get over to Newton, Wellesley, where they have created, they have much larger lot sizes in those areas, and they've, and, and where the, what are the areas that have the, that have beautiful tree lined roads with high density and extremely high property values? Those are the areas.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman, can I get a motion?
Oh, sure, a motion. Thought I started one. A motion to.
Actually, I just want to make one more comment.
Oh, sure.
I mean, I don't think it increases the value that much. I think if you're coming into town, whether it's a three acre lot or a two acre lot, if it's buildable, you're going to pay more or less the same. I think that, you know, certainly a three acre lot is somewhat more valuable, but, you know, I think the characteristics of the land probably are, are more va, more important to most people than the acreage. If it's a buildable lot, that generally drives the value more than the size of the lot. I mean, you can see, you can see in, in this town, three acre lots that are going for roughly the same value as two acre lots. It's just, it's a buildable lot. Yeah, so I think it's a, if it's a buildable lot, that tends to drive the price much more than the size of the lot, I think.
I think if we're trying to compare our community with communities in Massachusetts, I mean, it's, that definitely apples and oranges, because we do not provide the services that they do down there, and there's a lot more that goes into the value of the property, so.
I agree. I don't want to be Massachusetts. It's just that reference to Massachusetts has been made. It's been made a few times, so I figured I would connect it to where it's made.
I'm going to put my green light on. I'm originally from Massachusetts, so everyone knows. I left for a reason.
Is there anybody here that was born in New Hampshire on this board?
But I'm not from Massachusetts.
Me neither. It's a plus, it's a plus.
Where are you all from then? I just opened Kamona right there.
Two of us from Massachusetts, adjacent communities, actually.
Where are you from? Arlington. He's the rich, the rich.
Winchester.
I know, it still doesn't count.
Yeah.
All right, let's get some control here.
Who's the judge of this? Did I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could the motion be to support it? That way, is no, not bring it forward, and yes is to bring it forward, so people aren't confused how they're voting?
Sure.
Okay.
You guys got to make the motion.
I will make the, the motion to support bringing forward. Eighteen.
Zoning amendment eighteen. Roll call. Napa.
Happy yellow, nay.
Tessie, your nay.
Alan. Hey. Driscoll, nay. Getting closer though, Andy. Getting closer.
Yeah, next year. We'll go over the top.
I feel like I was. This is two years in a row, yeah.
With the conservation subdivisions. I think some of our other regulations will help with that.
You weren't here during all the discussions, but the upland, the, the sixty thousand of non-hidric a soils is what our regulation is now. The new regulation is making sixty thousand of uplands as a requirement. So that's going to make probably almost fifty percent less lots than what we currently approve now because of that upland requirement. But then you're making the lot determine the buildability and the value, not just an arbitrary number, because of the, you know, if a lot's got all uplands, or one's got a lot of wetlands, you know, but that wetlands was still counted as part of that sixty thousand.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm in favor because of those to the people, and it's more. Well, the, the ability to be.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it's their, their choice. But the other thing too, you know, John, the help, no backlots. If you do the backlot thing, that'll help too.
We haven't got to that.
Yeah, but another thing that could reduce the, the density of some of these projects.
Okay, next one is, are you in favor of amendment number nineteen? The Barrington zoning ordinance is recommended by the planning board as follows. Increase the required frontage for backlots from fifty to seventy-five feet to prohibit the creation of backlots and subdivisions consisting of ten lots and more, and to prohibit the creation of backlots created after March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Open this to public comment?
I have the same reasons on this one. I mean, as I had before. You brought it before the board, the board said no. And it was a petition article that came in late, and I just think that they shouldn't move it forward again.
This one's not a petition article, is it?
It's, looks like it's a blend of the two.
The hybrid of yours and mine.
They've blended the two of them.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, I think, came from, this is a combination of Andy's and mine, so it's not a petition article.
Right.
This one was, was going to be a petition article.
Nineteen?
Yep. If you want to refer to the, I did.
It was modified a little bit from the petition article.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the lawyer.
Yours is a petition article.
But mine was from the fifty to seventy-five feet, but they added the probe, to probe it, to prohibit the creation of backlots in subdivisions consisting of ten or more lots, and to prohibit the creation of backlots after lot, of lots created, of backlots, creation of backlots from lots created after March twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
So yours was a petition.
Mine wa, mine was originally, but they, but I, I believed in the wider, wider net coming in to create a little more.
I think the attorney rewrote this. There was a mistake made, because you wanted it to have the lots be ten lot bigger in order to do backlots. And this says, if it's got ten lots or more, you can't do backlots, is what this actually says if you read it.
Which I think is what he was after, is that he didn't, once you got to that size, that you.
Oh, I thought he wanted it only on the largest subdivisions and not the smaller ones.
I, I kind of did, yeah.
That's what you said when you brought it forward. That's what I'm saying. I read this afterwards, and I think that it was a misunderstanding.
You know, why you, with the frontage is two hundred feet, why you allowing them to create lots with frontage of fifty feet, and then creating two backlots? If you want to do, if you want to do, you know, if you want to go, go back lots, put a road in and access the lots, don't.
Yeah, so you're just saying what he's saying.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with this one, so, and as there, and Johnny, you're right.
Yeah, but what happens is, this is the one that's going to protect what everybody was talking about. If it's someone breaking off a backlot for their kid, or two backlots, so they can put their kid in college or whatever, they're still going to be allowed to do this. This is going to be for subdivisions that are larger than ten. So someone that comes in with two lots or four lots or something, you know, for their personal thing, this still allows it, is. And actually, I like this better than the other way, myself personally, but.
I agree.
But this is also making it seven five feet instead of fifty.
Yeah, the, the width, I, that's a difference.
Yeah, and that's where I'm mixed on it.
So what's your, what's your heartburn on it? Because when I look at you, I figure you're going to have fifteen, you're, you're going to have twenty, right, but you're going to have twenty feet tied up of it between a driveway and potentially shoulders, or fifteen feet of it tied up with driveway and shoulders, because you're going to have a ten foot or twelve foot drive, and then figure a two foot shoulder.
Sixteen plus two, two, so it's twenty.
Right, so. Oh, yeah. And then.
We never even got to.
On the explanation on the fifty, when it was originally done, was, it was fifty, that way, if someone in the future decided they wanted to make it a road, it was fifty foot wide, so they could make it a road going back in the future. So if you do two.
Let John finish and open public comment.
So right now, if you got seventy-five, and someone wants to put a road, the road's only got to be fifty feet wide, but now you got a, a seventy-five foot lane going back. But that was the reason for the fifty foot originally, when they originally created backlots. And that's why you were still able to do two backlots of twenty-five each, because it still left a fifty foot neck. So if, in the future, a road could go in, like you said, if someone wanted to build a road back.
It would just mean you'd have a, depending on your setback off the line, you could have a house pretty darn close to a road at the end of it.
Before more discussion, open this to public comment?
I do see somebody online. If you would like to make public comment for or against this application, please raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Closing public comment. Any further discussion before we get a motion?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a combination of Andy's and mine. I, you know, rather than mess it up, I'd be going for one of this.
And the comments by the attorney, that's on the planner notes, item number four, the proposed backwatts amendment, Article four one, four one three is written in the man that does not convey that the board is trying to do, and the town's attorney recommendation is not to proceed with it this year. However, if the board nonetheless chooses to proceed, a drafted proposed zoning amendment has been completed, and is combined with the changes made in four point one point three parentheses one. Please see proposed nineteen. So everybody's okay with the way nineteen is laid out by the lawyer?
Sure.
Yeah.
Motion to.
I just copy paste what she put on there, so this is not.
Is there a motion to advance this to the warrant?
A motion to.
A motion to, to support amendment nineteen. Second?
I'll second it.
Oh, didn't second, I'm sorry.
Thought you were thinking.
Thought you seconded this. You were asking for a second. I thought you seconded.
I'm asking for, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
What? I'm saving that for something else.
Need that bullet.
Same reasons before, I would have supported going to the voters.
Napa.
Happy yellow, I.
Tessie, your eye.
Alan, I.
Uh, reluctantly, I. Let the voters decide.
That's my line.
Oh, sorry. Rather be in Philadelphia. Okay. And number twenty. Are you in favor of amendment number twenty, the Barrington zoning ordinance is recommended by the planning board as follows. Amend Article Roman numeral six regarding conservation subdivisions to allow the planning board to require financial and technical feasibility studies of yield plans, and to prohibit lot areas, street rights away, and parking areas in the common open space. Open that to public comment? See no public comment, closing public comment. Nope, anybody online, public, for public.
There is a person online. If you would like to speak for or against this zoning amendment, please raise your hand. We'll give you a moment.
Closing public comment.
On this one, I have a question. Prohibited lot areas, what does that exactly mean? I guess I read that. I didn't know what, what we were saying.
Let's say someone says they want their lot, and you, doesn't show that it's financially feasible, lot area.
Yeah, but it says in the common area, in the common area. See, in the prohibited lot areas, street, street right away, and parking areas in the common open area. So that seems to be separate than when, than the.
It suggests that that's also in the common space. Is that what you're saying? The way it's worded?
Into, yeah, it's, it's saying in prohibited, to prohibit lot areas, street rates away, and parking areas in the common open space, so.
Didn't we have?
Are we prohibiting lot areas in the common space? I mean.
Let's see what it says. It might be that was part of the original language, and then stuff it down.
Because it, it, it seems to me we already can't allow, you don't want lots in the common.
Didn't we, didn't we add, I thought we had talked about wells and septics, didn't?
Yeah.
There was a piece on saying that you couldn't put your well or septic in the common open space, and I don't.
Part that we were thinking about.
I don't see that, unless that's what they mean by lot area.
So we had six point two point two nine E, individual or community water sewage systems?
Right, we were moving it up to the prohibited use.
And just other quick comment. I mean, on the explanation, I would add, allows the planning board to require a frontage. It doesn't, you know, the planning board to require, I think it's by...
You can't change this, because this is supposed to be public hearing.
Yeah, you can't change anything.
Right, you deny it. There's no time to change it. That's the reason why we started this six months ago, so this stuff could help me hide it up before we go through it.
What, even the explanation we can't change, John?
You can't change anything that was posted for this hearing, because if you change it, so the intent changes, then it has to go.
Wait, you're saying the explanation, yes, the explanation can change. However, the zoning amendment itself, language cannot change.
Okay, I'm looking for a change in the explanation.
Because the explanation is just for purposes of the public.
It says now, the planning board to require, and I think I want to add, allows the planning board to require. So it gives the planning board the right to require it, but doesn't require the planning board to do it every time. So it's only when we look at something we think it's got a problem, we want to have more information on. So I'll just put allows at the beginning of that.
Because the explanation is not that, but if it's the article.
And what's written says it allows them. It doesn't say that it's required.
Yeah.
So here's one based on the legal comment. I would probably like to remove financial and just stay with technical, because I think it would be sort of cleaner and have to deal with the other language next year, but we can't do that.
And also, to me, I don't agree with that. I mean, a lot of these things, you know, you see where they, they put a 500-foot road in, they blast ledge, they put a bridge in, and they pick up two lots in the back.
I think she was saying we don't have a language to describe that.
I think, I think that the financial feasibility is, to me, is what gets to that. It proves to me that those lots are worth the money you're putting in for infrastructure to get it there, you know?
Right, no, I don't disagree. I was just looking at her comment, that maybe we need to explain that better to get that stand up.
We can't change it.
Oh, yeah, change it. Yeah.
So what's the Supreme Court decision in 2008 about yield plans? They must be, quote, "feasible" and, quote, "realistic," and they must comply with all state and local regulations. For example, our 7% roads, our 10% driveways, our setbacks and buffers, stream crossing details, which we require in our regulations if we want to, contiguous uplands, as we're going to change, all Article 7 items, and even 9.5 parentheses 2, which allows the planning board at any point to change the buffer in prime wetlands. We want to change it to 150 feet, we do it with a vote, and that's what's required.
I think realistic is basically the financially, you know, financially feasible.
Yeah.
Is it realistic? Is it reasonable that this guy's going to spend a million dollars to pass the smell test to $200,000 worth of lots?
So I think we can play with our yield plan based on this court decision and be really strict about everything.
And I think, too, that conservation subdivisions give the developers a lot of benefits. One of those benefits should not be more lots than you would have put in a convention, and I think that's what's happening right now.
Mm-hmm.
They're getting, they're putting in, you know, 25 lots when they wouldn't have done in the conventional subdivision. There's no way. So I think that in order to reduce the density that we were talking about, this is a way to, at least, you know, hold up the amount of lots that would actually do in a convention. I think that's the intent, too.
Is this unreference to this article?
No, I'm sorry. It's in general. Sorry. Any...
I'm done.
You're done? Any more comments?
I would just like to make a comment. When you were asking about the, I just lost my transcript, I'm sorry, about the prohibit law areas, I read back through what I said to turn in, and the purpose of it. So she did get this information that talks about putting it as individual community water systems that are not allowed in the open space, so I assume, I can only assume that's what her intent was. So when, if and when this does get passed, the language that you see in this backup documentation is what's actually going to be adopted.
Oh, oh.
So...
All right, well, if you can't change it, it's either yes and no, so...
Yeah, so she combines the open space plan, I guess.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, is there a motion to advance this, pass this?
Make a motion that we advance this amendment number 20.
Second. Roll call.
NAP I.
Capella O'Nay.
Tussier O'Nay.
Allen O'Nay.
Driscoll Nay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's it, unless there's other business you want to attend to.
I don't think so.
Like a home type of Bruins game.
We better motion.
It's true. Is there a motion to...
Is that a motion?
Get out of here.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Sorry, I'm five minutes late, but that's because somebody yacked too much.
Thank you.
Have a good one, Barbara.